I hope so.
Start over. Yeah. So I don't know if the our planning administrator or C A O have a comment on that.
Yeah, um, I mean, like when we first received the package there and there was a brief discussion, it might have been with staff members not with us right now, but it was, um, there was a suggestion that, uh, imminently there would be submitted to the M E C P, the documentation for their consideration, review, feedback. And so I built that into the letter that we presented to the applicants because we felt a bit under pressure to, because we didn't want to work with them. We want to make bring this forward as fast as possible. I'm conscious that we didn't want to drag the timeframes out, but I was also curious to know, is there going to be an opinion from the M E C P about the draft outline proposal that was presented by the colleague at Tulip, Tulip there about how to best mitigate, um, the the bobbling in the Eastern Meadow Park. So it is an area that I felt that we were a little bit deficient in. Uh, but the measures at the same time, the measures that were put forward did seem to make sense.
As you say, didn't their biologist?
She submitted to them. Okay, that was, I'm not sure we received a copy of the record about or any further opinions. Yeah.
They'd contact you if they had any, not there was any contact back, that they had an issue with the work.
Yeah. That bit I wasn't familiar with and they, uh, you know, so we were hoping to have something on file that affects because we're just a little bit in the dark about it.
Yeah, we're not looking at hamstring process here with seven month.
There we can, I can, uh, ask Kelly if, if they received any comment, but typically, sorry, Kelly major is, is the environmental lead for Tulock. You took over for Murphy or he was Val's, uh, plus and, uh, he's taken over her files. Um, the process they submitted and if it's one of those, if we don't hear from them, that's a really good thing.
Yeah.
Great. And we didn't hear from them either in the consultation process. A vacuum of information.
Okay, let's stop talking about it in case they're watching.
Okay, so to item 11, let me get some clarification. Yeah. Thank you. Well, I'll get Kelly to review that section. The subdivision shall include provisions which confirm the zone subject lands to occur in conformity with the recommended mitigation measures. Yes. So that speaks to, uh, the item above. That's what we're working on. Phone sheets we're seeing by.
Sorry, can you speak up a little bit if that's okay?
Item 12 speaks to what we were just speaking about nine and 11, which is, um, those are the ones, those are the professional studies and, and, uh, that we produced that we are working from to bring the subdivision board. So don't have a particular problem with that. The hydro geological study is what we're basing our work on as is the always wetland delineation and, and, uh, the assessment for the birds. So that was a lot of conditions. Pretending to propose lot two.
Yeah. So this is the bottom corner where in the case of park, they kind of wetland, wetland comes in. So it's just ensuring really that that, um, section 28 permit would be obtained if any, um, developments take place around as far as 15 or 30 meters of buffer there.
Okay. And certainly, you know, we can, we can put that on title as part of the subdivision's agreement if you wish to, that lot two, uh, if it's within 30 meters. But we know there's a substantial building envelope there and, and, uh, my experience, people don't generally build at the back of the lot, but we can, if that, if that's something you desire, we don't see an issue with that.
It would be consistent with other reports to have that protection there, right?
Um, 14, prior to final approval, the owner shall ensure all the recommendations.
We're halfway through again.
Prefer the property owner to adhere to the guidelines regarding the basis. Species. Whoa. Going to need some explanation here. That's one I don't normally see.
Yeah, um, this is a standard condition brought forth from the development. We have no knowledge or understanding or expectation that there would be any form of invasive species on this property. Being farmed and everything changed for such a long time. It's more the backup condition that if they were found, they would be handled and treated in the appropriate way.
Okay. Again, I'll ask Kelly to speak to that. I'm not a biologist or environmentalist. I haven't seen that condition before. So, you know, I think we're getting down to, these are, are different than the conditions we provided and we're seeing them for the first time. So we're trying to work through them together.
Sure. And, and by no means are we getting to a final, final tonight. I think it's good to get a sense as to things we need to work on can go away. If there's deal breakers, we'll talk, talk about.
Communications, utilities, infrastructure, Andrew. Necessary usements dedicate all necessary blocks or enter in necessary for drainage utility servicing purposes, including not limited to, yes. For clarity, the owner shall demonstrate that all necessary use and dedication of blocks and agreements are, will be enforced and effect to the satisfaction of township prior to final approval. Final approval, which cite alteration. Or shall we relocate any existing utilities that may be required to develop subject lands in accordance with subdivision at the sole expense of the owner? Okay. Vegetation fencing and streetscape requirements. Prior to final approval, mature vegetative landscape buffer is maintained along the western and northern perimeters.
Yeah. So this ties back to, um, one of the policies we're having open. This is that minimum of three meters or five meter buffer would be maintained. So running through those lots, there is a large kind of tree cops area. I mean, it'd be great if you could maintain that as part of, um, as much of that as possible, but we're just requesting that the buffer be maintained around the perimeter of those lots.
Yeah, that to my knowledge, the only way to do that is, is through a safe plan control agreement. I don't think we want to do safe plan control on lots, but and we don't normally provide in a rural subdivision, a landscaping plan or a vegetation plan. Anecdotally, your client doesn't clear cut property and, and, you know, they want to, as the neighbors do, have some, some tree cover.
Yeah. And it wasn't in any way written in assumption that you would go and clear, but it is just to make sure on the same page about where possible tie in any landscape features that exist.
Maybe the language can be changed in that then Simon, that a mature vegetated landscape buffer is being maintained where possible along the western and northern perimeter.
Sure. I'm okay with that. With the council decide, but.
Yeah.
That's fine. And prior to final approval, ongoing supporting materials should be prepared to satisfaction with entities. Yes, yes, yes. Yes. Our southern should be revised to new requirements or condition four to provide convenience of any water course or drainage issues. Go back to condition four with less.
Button rules for roads and destruction.
Actually, use note.
So roads and ditches, this is what this speaking to, they just itemized it out, from what I understand. Okay. Prior to final approval registration, the owner shall retain a qualified professional certified writing at the works instructing in accordance with plans, reports and specifications prepared in support of the application and satisfaction. Are you speaking and maybe, um, are you speaking about our, our engineer stamping drawings and?
Yeah, any certified professional in contact these reports or supplementary reports or whatever you come back, if you change your plans and say, okay, we need to, then yeah, just, just recognizing that engineers or professionals would be required.
Passionate part line, yes. So fairly standard calculation for all of that. Early final registration subdivision's agreement shall include special provisions considered acceptable to the township. Including that the owner shall agree that all vacant lots be restructured so best efforts are taken to ensure there is no standing water. Just, just on all of these items. The, the sub, the subdivision and the home builder are the same person. So, um, Dan certainly, uh, knows what the grading plan is for the subdivision. So, um, certainly we would be, you know, uh, adhering to those.
I suppose there's nothing in this agreement that says that none of those lots would be sold off individually from what I saw. So even though it's great, if you want move forward and build these homes, um, yeah, it was kind of to recognize that the preparation phase of this subdivision that we graded and that therefore there wouldn't be a piece that was non-graded that was left and then sold to somebody else and didn't therefore integrate as part of the development.
But there you typically don't go and grade a lot until it's sold.
Well, we asked that question too of the consultants and we advise that you do.
Not in Northern Ontario. I, yeah, I don't like that one.
So this whole section, I honestly have an issue with. So just so we're more clear if we could, while we're talking about it and negotiating, when we do the plan of subdivision, we produce a grading plan that if there are individual lots that someone buys and builds on, they have to adhere to the grading plan that has been approved. As does our client, when he, when you approve the grading plan as part of a plan, the subdivision, he has, all lots have to meet that grade. So they slope certain way to the ditches out and get the water off the site, all of those things. We never clear the entire subdivision and do the grading plan prior to final approval. You're absolutely right, counselor. It's when the lot is sold, you go in, you clear the lot, you, you build the house and you grade the lot to the approved grading plan. You're absolutely right, counselor. It's when the lot is sold, you go in, you clear the lot, you you build the house and you grade the lot to the approved grading plan.
Everybody likes their lot a little different tree, leave this tree, take that tree, I mean, yeah. I just, I've never seen it done that way, like up here, down the, down the big city, yeah, clear the whole land and, but here, it's too much clearing.
Right. Yeah, if that's gonna work, you know, that's less disturbance to the land and I, you know, I have no, I'm not hanging out on this one.
So that whole section can be taken out?
Um.
Just refer to a lot grading plan.
Yeah, which we already have in numerous spots throughout the conditions, uh frankly. Numerous, numerous spots in this, we've talked about the. The grading plan. And.
Probably say this thing.
Um, we can take that offline, that's fine, you don't have to do that right now. Yeah, I can see where this is coming from. This comes from developments in large municipalities or cities where they're building hundreds of homes at the same time. It's not applicable to Rotherglan, very frankly. Thank you. Um.
Just to confirm, counsel is fine if that section gets removed?
Yes.
I think so.
I am.
The whole condition or just that?
Just refer to refer to grading, lot grading plan.
I I would assume that there are boilerplate things that. If you come across a burial site, you're going to notify the appropriate authorities, like that's all covered, right?
By law, we have.
Yeah, yeah, so I can say that.
Um. Um, and this is actually in your, in your um other appendix four as well. Um, we've responded to this, the archaeological assessments necessary when you're within three hundred meters of a navigable waterway. Or where there's been known occurrences, so respectfully, there's not, and this was a farm. Uh, the rationale provided to us in some of the comments was that it was part of the Rotherglan town site. Uh, we've never had to do a archaeological assessment where it didn't strike the criteria or requirements. And certainly, as the counselor pointed out, if we come across any sort of. Uh burial, um.
A really big dinosaur, uh, you know. I mean, are we comfortable removing that?
Yes.
Do you want to remove, so we, it's in two spots, so right now, in the options package, which we won't have to review after this. So the options package has a section in there for a um a checklist, which is a desktop. Exercise that would need to be done, because it is close to, it's within that old Rotherglan site, so, and that's fine, if that, if council doesn't want to have that. This I one in section twenty four was. If, if that wasn't going to be, if an art, if an artifact is found, that they would report that, we're just saying that.
Yeah, well, they.
When council is just agreed to take it out.
No, no.
No, yeah, I I asked if that was dealt with someplace else, that if you find an archaeological or some kind of uh burial site. We are notified or the proper procedure, that's, I don't, I want it to be somewhere, okay, I I definitely.
And Steve just answered that, so.
But we actually had it happen recently, where they found that a bone, a pima. Turned out to be a moose bone, but we had to stop the entire project until.
Yeah, and that's taken care of in.
In turn, like on their end, not as cool as a dinosaur bone.
Okay, as long as it's taken care of, I think that.
It's taken care of in twenty four I one, that's the only place.
Yeah, so that whole condition would just be shortened down to the final part if you want to keep that in.
Yeah. I think that this right here.
Yeah, just so I I.
I I.
Captain.
So the owner shall agree to the following, should any previously unknown or un-evaluated archaeological resource be uncovered during development? That such resources may be considered a new archaeological site and therefore subject to section forty eight one of the Ontario Heritage Act. Is that the language that is typical to, if you find something?
To be honest, counselor, this, this is way more conditions than we're used to dealing with, I'm gonna be honest, I mean, we, we do uh ten subdivisions and and uh, and I wish, uh, you know, we could have. Drawn on some of your neighboring communities to get the conditions to draft approval, because they're usually. One to two pages max.
So I, yeah, I appreciate that, I guess my question would be.
I haven't had this in there before, so I, it's new.
Yeah, ultimately, I think, I mean, if there's a legal requirement as a developer that if you find something you have no choice to, then fine, we, I don't know that, I guess, is is, and that would be a conversation of. We want to make sure that obviously if something of. Material is discovered, that it just. So I leave, I mean, leave, leave that's that little paragraph in. The, you know, something's found, it's uh reported.
It's subject to the Ontario Heritage.
Right.
Yeah.
And I don't see a problem with that, it's, it's, it's part of the work anyway that we have to do. Um, and let's hope it doesn't.
No, yeah.
Right.
But if it does, yeah.
Um, twenty five, uh, just moving forward if council is agreeable, nine nine, nine one one emergency service, I think, with the um, the numbering is typically assigned by your. By your building department at the time of the case you went to the building permit, but if they choose to assign um. Addresses, municipal addresses as part of the approval, that would certainly be appreciated because it helps uh when. We have to connect hydro and other things to have a municipal idea, so that is something that the municipality would like to do, to provide, and our clients would be happy to accept it. Um, the owner shall also agree in the subdivision agreement to display the lot number and corresponding assigned address from the location, okay? To and during construction, clarity, the draft's on approval, shall include a period of three years. Um, we have in the past asked for five, I don't anticipate us needing uh five, so I'm okay with three, you know, we're trying to bring forward the final. Subdivision agreement as quickly as possible to meet the conditions. And that speaks to the date. And probably the executed subdivision agreement, yes, that's standard, and um so is the implementation under item thirty. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got all the paper on my, on my uh. My agenda. Okay, so at this point. The developer, the staff, and the council all had the opportunity to review, to review the uh, the document, and. I guess I'm going to ask staff then, if you, you will do an amended. Agreement or all I uh terms set out, and then it'll come back to council?
It'll first go to the developer to ensure that they agree, and then it will come back to council.
Okay, and we hope to bring it back on the fourteenth, if if everything can.
Yes.
Can be agreed upon between both, so um.
Are, are we, I know there was one thing in uh. In the last section four, are we discussing that or we?
I think we discussed everything already.
Yeah.
Uh, but on the geotechnical, there was, that was, I mean, to me, I'm just gonna say, like, usually on the geo technical end of it. The building inspector decides whether the footing, the bit, the ground is good enough to put footings their house on, we don't need, shouldn't really need geo technical. For the, for them to supply a geo technical report.
That was just an optional one, so council doesn't have to put that in, you don't have to.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just odd, because, I mean, typically, the building inspector does that.
Okay, but again, when you're packaging a property and you're creating a subdivision, it is at times required. But it's not in, we don't have to do it.
Okay. Give it back to you, to the developer, and uh. Then on the fourteenth, and uh, I thank council, I thank the staff and uh. Mr. DeGonye and.
Yeah.
And Steve for coming and going through everything, that'll make it. Move faster, right?
We're very excited.
Yeah, this is great news for Miss Pyle, we're very excited about eighteen new properties being developed, we're looking forward to seeing lots of DeGonye activity in our municipality, so be great.
Oh, okay. Next, we have our adjournment. Moved by councillor Featherstone, second by councillor McGuinness, that this meeting be adjourned at seven P M. Like to close the meeting. All in favor?